Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us for this, gosh, fourth, fifth installment of Lunch with Lawmakers. And we have a full, jam-packed hour as we talk to those candidates who are running for three wards in the town of Hilton Head, Ward 1, 3, and 6. And again, just some great thoughtful candidates, some local men who really love their community, are passionate about the issues, and I think that you're going to enjoy their conversation and kindness to grow our area as much as I do. So, we're gonna get started. Just really quick, want to mention that we have some upcoming Lunch with Lawmakers. Go ahead and put these on your calendar next Tuesday. We're gonna have a one-on-one, 30-minute conversation with Republican candidate for South Carolina Congressional District 1, Nancy Mace. And then the following week, we will have, again, a one-on-one with Joe Cunningham, who is the incumbent Democrat for our congressional seat. So again, mark your calendar for those. Without further ado, because we do have, again, a full calendar, a full schedule, an hour ahead of us, we're gonna begin with Ward 1. And the two candidates who are vying for that seat are not really newcomers to politics. They've served on boards and commissions. I've loved working in this community with both of them. Think the world of both of them, and I just know that they have great ideas for moving Hilton Head forward. So, we welcome Alex Brown and Peter Christian to the forum. Thank you, guys, so much for carving out this hour of time. We have been beginning with the incumbent, but because both of you are, again, newcomers to running for town council, I should mention, this is the seat that was previously held by Mark Grant, who decided not to run for reelection. So, we'll just go alphabetically, if that's okay. And Alex, begin with you. And take about a minute and tell us a little bit about yourself, past workings and dealings that you've had, holding board and commission seats with the town of Hilton Head, and why you decided to run for this seat.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Hannah, for this opportunity. Again, my name is Alexander Brown, Jr. I am running for the town of Hilton Head, Ward 1 council seat. I was born and raised on Hilton Head. My family stretches back over seven generations within the Chaplain area. I am currently employed for the last 30-some-odd years by a company called Camp Hilton Head, where I serve in executive capacity as their Vice President of Operations, responsible for six locations and over 50 employees. I've served the town in many ways, as far as civic engagement. I was on the Towns Planning Commission for eight years, served as Chairperson for six of those years. I was on the Vision and Project Steering Committee, US 278 Corridor Committee, and many others. And my real reason for running for Ward 1 is I have a natural connection to the community. I've been serving in a recommending body capacity, and I want to now be a part of the decision-making for the town of Hilton Head. So, I'm pleased to be involved, very happy for this opportunity to connect with our community through this forum, and of course, looking for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you, Alex. And Peter, to you the question, why did you decide to run for this seat? And what kind of work have you been doing in the community and with your career?
Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm running also for the Ward 1 seat, and humbly ask for your vote. I'm the father of four, the grandfather of seven, and I've been my home on Hilton Head for the past 20 years. And I'm a former special needs teacher in my early days before switching to the community management profession. And most of you know that I manage Hilton Head Plantation, the largest residential community on Hilton Head Island. And in my mind, it's about service. And as soon as I was able to and be eligible for, I took the Leadership Hilton Head class back in 2002. I immediately served on the Board of Zoning Appeals for 11 years, through those years as Chair, and then moved on to the Planning Commission. And presently, I'm serving as Chairman of the Towns Planning Commission. Served on the Division Development Team, and I'm on the Sustainability Advisory Committee for the Greater Island Committee. So, no stranger to being involved in the town. And in my mind, it's about service. And service giving back to the community that has given me a very good career and a very good profession. And I was taught early on by my mom and dad and my siblings that you give back to the community that has given so much for you. So, this is about giving back to the community, and I humbly ask for your support and your vote.
Prior to today's forum, the candidates received issues and topics that we'll put out to our membership and ranked in importance of what they would like to hear from our candidates about. And so, you all have received those topics. And so, without having received the direct questions, we'll just get right into those issues now. Alex went first before, so Peter, this question is posed to you. Take about a minute, if you will. And let's talk about the 278 corridor, specifically District 1, the district seat that you're running for, the ward seat you're running for. 278 has a lot of effects in that particular area. Do you favor one of the alternatives over another, and why?
You know, Hannah, there are a multitude of alternatives out there, and I think it needs to be a hybrid. And I'm in favor of expanding the bridge, which needs to be expanded. I've talked with lawmakers, Senator Davis and Jeff Bradley at length, about that project. And I think that corridor can be done in a manner that is respectful of the Native Island community, that gives them an opportunity to display their culture and keep their land. And it could only be a two-lane corridor if we can control the lights at Squire Pope Road and at Wild Horse and Spanish Wells Road. And we've even looked at the possibility of an overpass, a grade-separated intersection at Wild Horse and Spanish Wells Road to alleviate that light. Those are where the real choke points are. I'm in favor of Jeff Bradley's idea, which would save about $10 million if we didn't take down the old bridge, and about $10 million for building leisure paths and recreation on the new bridge. So, you know, those are the ideas that I favor. And I favor an independent consultant looking at all of those options and giving us their advice.
Alex, the same question to you. I know you have sat on, you mentioned the 278 Corridor Committee. Do you favor one of the alternatives over the other? And the Native Island community as well, that you have grown up in? I know that there's a lot of discussions as well about what alternative perhaps would save that land and protect that community.
Sure, absolutely. Great question, of course. And it was a pleasure serving with you on that 278 Corridor Committee. I'm gonna take, you know, most of my time to talk about leadership when it comes to this project, okay? It seems as if SEDOT has kind of taken a leadership role in this project at the moment, and for a lot of different reasons. COVID-19 is probably one of them. Our committee that we sat on, Hannah, had not met since February of 2020, right? And now, with November, looking for potentially a alternative to be selected by the beginning of the year. So, at this moment, the direct answer to the question is, I don't have an alternative that I support. I am in support of no more pavement. It's just not the look and feel that we're looking for on Hilton Head. The stony community in particular has already been bisected once, with the road being widened from two lanes to four lanes. And I'm definitely in support of a third-party consultant coming in. It offers us the opportunity to reengage with this project. Very early on, SEDOT made the statement that the town of Hilton Head has veto power over the project, and I think we need to use that. We need to use the 278 corridor as an opportunity to revitalize the stony area and make sure that it's a project that we all on Hilton Head are proud of, and there are not unintended consequences down the road we're not necessarily looking at at this moment.
There are so many more questions I could ask about the 278 corridor. We could have just 30 minutes, just us talking about that. I do want to keep going, though, and continue to ask about other topics that were posed to our membership, that they want to hear from you guys. Peter, you answered the last question. Alex, we go back to you. And let's talk about economic development for a minute, and specifically, small business economic development. You know, not far from you guys is a really attractive opportunity zone that runs through the north part of the island. What would you propose on how Hilton Head should market and use that opportunity zone?
Well, sure, absolutely. I'll start with, I'm a relationship builder. I like to connect folks and try to drum up participation and excitement about going in a certain direction, okay? And I think the small business opportunity on Hilton Head is grave, all right? Tourism, I love tourism, that's my business, all right? I'm selling souvenirs, so I need the tourism here on Hilton Head. But I think we've got a grave opportunity to diversify our economy to a degree. As I have been visiting various neighborhoods and engaging with families, you know, parents that, you know, have young children, that of course, aspiring for great careers, but they are also in love with what we call paradise on Hilton Head, right? So, there are not as many job opportunities on Hilton Head. I think we've got an opportunity to kind of fill some of those gaps. Unfortunately, the Economic Development Corporation that was stood up years ago, we hired a director, that fell apart. We've got a great asset with Mr. John O'Toole, with the Beaufort County Economic Development Team. And I think we need to garnish that relationship, okay? Put a real, serious focus on small business on Hilton Head. There are a lot of great spaces on Hilton Head that are currently empty. We can definitely fill those spaces with the right opportunity. So, a keen focus on, you know, redevelopment of, you know, business atmosphere on Hilton Head is definitely something that I want to work hard on.
Peter, the question to you, economic development, using the opportunity zone and enhancing, growing, recruiting, and retaining small business.
Well, the opportunity zone, for those listeners who are not aware of the ramifications, is a zone that we created where if an investor comes in and makes a significant capital investment in that area and holds on to that capital investment for a number of years, they would get a tax credit. And that is a significant perk to an entrepreneur who would like to come in. We are not advertising that and marketing it enough to the outside world. That airport corridor with the airport expansion has created opportunities for many small businesses to relocate in that area. And we're looking for clean businesses to locate that are going to attract the younger generation. One of the side effects of the COVID-19 issue has been, we have received an influx of younger residents onto the island, and they are leaving the city areas where there are more draconian restrictions due to the virus, and also other issues within their community, and they're moving here. Number one, it's less expensive, they have more freedom, and they figured out that they can work from home with a good Wi-Fi connection, cell phone connection, and an airport close by. So, those young entrepreneurs coming in need to be quartered. And we need to also look outside the community to bring in businesses, cleaner businesses, that will set up on the island. And that also involves our workforce and a controversial issue of workforce housing, which I think we're going to get into later on. And I'll expand on that in the next segment.
Peter, thank you so much. The next question goes to you. And let's talk a minute about COVID response and recovery. Tourism was hit very hard, as well as our small businesses. Thankfully, we're hearing today about what the rules are going to be for the, what, $65 million that the state is going to make available to minorities, small businesses, and our nonprofits. Hopefully, a lot of our businesses will take part in that. But do you feel like Hilton Head, Beaufort County, do you feel like that the response to COVID has been enough? Has it been lacking? And if we do have an influx of money, more CARES or whatever they're called, a program, of federal dollars that come in as stimulus, what would you like to see happen in our community with those dollars to sustain our economy in all of the sectors, including tourism?
Well, nationally, COVID has had a devastating effect on business. And businesses have shuttered, have closed down. Major retailers have been affected in unbelievable ways, where they're filing for bankruptcy. And our main concern should be keeping small businesses open. Yes, we need to be healthfully smart, but we also need to take all the necessary steps to keep our businesses open. I run a business, I have over 100 employees, and during the pandemic, we did not shut down. Everyone came to work, we took appropriate precautions, we limited hours, we did things by appointment, but we held outdoor events, we adapted. And I think those are the key things. And I think the chamber has been excellent in educating the public on how they can be smart about dealing with COVID-19. Testing is very, very important, but getting a vaccine and getting that vaccine, once it's available, out to our frontline service providers, our firefighters, our nurses, our doctors, our police officers, so they can be taken care of first. That would be my first priority with any type of federal or state funding. They need to be protected so they can serve us. But keeping small businesses and businesses open on the island is key. And we were able to keep tourism alive on the island. We didn't have a great year, but we had a good year. And that is extremely important. And we are going to be more popular because fewer people are traveling abroad, and we're going to be that destination.
Alex, seven months later, since the call came to shut everything down, we're open. We're showing some good numbers again. If you had that seat on town council, what would you do different as we continue to recover from COVID? And what do you think we could have done differently to have either sped up our success or maybe changed the numbers somehow?
Sure, absolutely. Great question. This is definitely a difficult topic because none of us have experience in a pandemic situation, right? We're kind of learning as we go. And you're right, Hannah, you know, seven months later, here we are. And fortunately, we've seen some recovery. But let's be mindful that the most businesses on Hilton Head that rely on the tourist industry, unlike planned unit development, we lost a whole month of April, okay, which is the start of the season, right? And you just, you never get that back, all right? So, you know, being able to make adjustments as a business owner was very difficult at that time. I applaud the chamber for being involved as a conduit to resources. And I applaud the nonprofits here on Hilton Head that really stepped up to make funds available to folks on the ground that were losing their jobs because we were shut down, right? So, the only thing that I'd say we could possibly do differently, Hannah, is the government, too often, I guess, labels itself as a limited-service government, right? But the businesses on Hilton Head are so critical to our success. The communication piece between the government and the businesses, in my opinion, could have been better, okay? More on-the-ground visits, more understanding of what's going on in terms of complications, if it's payroll, if it's the protection gear that was needed, that sort of thing. And again, I applaud the efforts from outside organizations, but the government, in my mind, could do a better job with connecting with those businesses here on Hilton Head.
Alex, staying on the COVID relief and recovery, a big debate, it's polarizing in our community, is that of wearing masks. If you were elected, would you continue to keep the mask ordinance in place? Or when or how would be any type of metric to begin to relax that?
Yeah, well, understanding that Beaufort County has already voted to remove the mask ordinance, there's definitely a conversation that needs to continue. You know, none of us should be making decisions without true data in front of us, okay? Trends to help us make those decisions. But more importantly, Hannah, I would want to make sure that as the dialogue continues, we stay solid in understanding both sides of it and be more cohesive as we make a decision versus divisive, okay? Unfortunately, we've had experiences in our stores with folks on one side that believe in masks and folks on the other that don't believe in masks, right? So, our messaging is key. Our opportunity to listen and learn as we make a decision is also key. And ultimately, the safety and well-being of all citizens is what we need to keep in mind as we make that decision.
Peter, I'll pose the same question to you on the mask ordinance.
Yeah, and that is, has been a very divisive issue. I have a 15-year-old daughter who's going back to school, wearing a mask two days a week. And when she gets home, she is not a happy camper because she's had that mask on all day, except for a lunch period where they sit alone and eat their lunch. And she complains about having a headache when she gets back home. But the reality is, for now, it is protecting her and protecting her classmates from spreading that disease. And it has to be a balance. And if the numbers come down, I would be in favor of, you know, removing the mask ordinance. But right now, you have to listen to the numbers. We are a tourist area where we get influxes of folks from out of town all the time. And when we go to another metropolitan area, we have to quarantine for 14 days. But the tourists coming down from those areas, they don't have to quarantine for 14 days. So, we need to protect ourselves and the mask ordinance for now, as much as we dislike it. And I personally detest, because I often forget my mask when I'm walking from my car to the grocery store or going in to do some other shopping somewhere and have to run back and get it. But I get it. And I realize that it's an imposition on some people's personal rights and some people's personal space, gives them a headache, they can't breathe very well. However, it is keeping the numbers down. And for the time being, we need to respect the science until the numbers come down to an appropriate level.
Guys, we're at the point in the forum where we're gonna hop over to another ward in just a moment. But before we do, Peter, if you'll just take the next minute, and anything that we didn't talk about on those subjects that you're passionate about, that you want to see happen, as well as why voters should vote for you. And then we'll hop over to Alex.
Yeah, and I did want to talk about, you know, policing. And, you know, I think the town is on track with their debate with the county on policing. We, according to the sheriff, we are getting the same service, whether we pay the additional funds or if we don't. And that is a conversation that we need to drive home. If we're getting additional service, then by all means, we should pay for that additional service. But if we are getting the same service, that's a conversation we need to have. We also need to be smart about, you know, attracting our tourists and realize that our residents benefit from tourism in many different ways. Obviously, our businesses benefit from it. But those folks who own the homes that are using those, that are attracting those tourists, they pay the higher tax rate for their home. They also pay the accommodations backs. They also will pay the 1%, the majority of the 1% sales tax, that's going to fund the bridge project. So, there needs to be a balance between tourists and residents. And we need to be focused on residents, and they need to be our number-one priority. However, tourism is there, and tourism is what allows us to enjoy the lifestyle we have and the economy of scale that we have. And we need to be constantly reminded of that when we can't get out of our driveway or we can't get into the store, or we can't get over that bridge.
Alex, the same question to you. Any, and those are, by the way, subjects, topics that will come to the other candidates. So, you are off the hot seat on those particular ones, what I appreciate you bringing them up. Alex, for you, anything that we didn't get to, that you're passionate about, that you would prioritize in that particular ward, and why should folks vote for you?
Oh, sure. I'll go back to leadership. I think that our community is yearning, strong leadership. As I mentioned before, I've been here all of my life, a grave connection to Ward 1, and want to make sure that Ward 1 is receiving the same services and benefits as other wards on Hilton Head. So, I'm a fighter in that aspect. I'm not going to be conflicted in my decision-making, going to focus on Ward 1. And again, I'm a relationship builder. We've got too much of a contentious relationship with our county at the moment, and we rely on each other so much, the county and the town. And I'd like to see us have a more vibrant relationship with our county, okay? The town of Hilton Head is a huge part of the tax base, and we should get our appropriate funding back to the town of Hilton Head. But that's done by having more communication and more dialogue about the issues, like the convenience center, okay? Not just pulling the rug from underneath one another. It's not the way to do business. I've never done business in that manner. I'm always willing to communicate and listen, and that's the culture that I'm looking to enhance once I'm elected. So, again, Hannah, I thank you for this time. I thank the chamber for putting on this event, and looking forward to everyone voting Alex Brown, November 3rd.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Again, Alex Brown and Peter Christian, candidates for Ward 1, which is that north part of Hilton Head Island. It's a beautiful area, and I know you both want to protect it and see it grow in a great way. We're going to take your video off. You guys are off the hot seat, so if you do have lunch in front of you, you can stay on the call if you want in the background. But we're going to bring on now our next group of candidates, and this is for Ward 3, Tommy Reitz and David Ames. I'll let our producer behind the scenes, Kelly Brunson, thank you, Peter. We'll let her bring those videos up really fast. All right, gentlemen, I hope that you enjoyed the conversation of the guys before you, some great topics. This will be the same format, but you'll get some of the same sort of questions, but we will try to move on to different issues as well, specifically those that I know that you guys face in Ward 3. And you know what? I'm happy to say I'm actually a voter in Ward 3. So, I'm particularly interested in the comments, and that being my homestead, Hannah Ranch is there. So, let's begin, as we said before, that we begin with the incumbent, as well as alphabetically, and in this particular case, David, you've served on town council now for two terms, three terms? And tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to continue to serve in this seat.
Thanks, Hannah. I really appreciate this opportunity. And I'd like to recognize and thank the chamber for its response to COVID. Its weekly Teletown Hall is a great idea, it's done a good job. I think this conversation today is incredibly important to the community for a variety of reasons, and I think we'll get into that as we answer questions. My background on the island, as I've said a number of times, 1973, worked as Vice President of Community Planning with Charles Frazier. As people know, Seapines had its challenges in the mid-'70s. Two other vice presidents and I started our own company, Development Associates, which was a planning consulting firm plus development company. We did a number of projects on Hilton Head Island. And in 1980, we created and established Long Cove Club and developed it over the next eight years. Right now, I have my own company called Ames Co., but I'm spending most of my time working with town council. I think my answers today, you should understand, will focus on the balance that is always in front of us, and also the absolute necessity for collaboration within our community. I'm very encouraged by what I see as a shift in the focus of the chamber and in the DMO. Destinations International is now talking about the core client of a Destination Management Plan are the residents. And I think that is a powerful message that this community of residents ought to be aware of. I think that the fact that we are beginning to move in that direction suggests that there is an opportunity for dialogue between the community of residents and the community of businesses, because after all, in the end, we are one. I think I have the experience that matters from a business standpoint, but also from a nonprofit standpoint, and also from a volunteer in a substantial number of public planning issues that the town has faced over decades. I still have fire in my belly. I am deeply caring about this community and would very much like to serve, again, as Town Council Representative, Ward 3. as Town Council Representative, Ward Three. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, David. Tom, I look so forward to getting to know more about you. You come from a beautiful area. And I know that one of the reasons why you're running has to do with just protecting it and making it grow and preservation and being important as well. Tell me about you, why you decided to run for office.
Hannah, thank you very much. I tell you, I want to thank the chamber and all the people looking in today. This is a very important election. I made this decision to run for this seat because every day I run into residents who tell me the same thing over and over again. Their voice is not being heard and they're worried about the island's future. They're very concerned about the growth that's happening and how it's going to be managed. And I'm telling you, everybody I run into, quite a few of them have lost confidence in their current leadership because the government on the island is getting a little bit too big. I've spent most of my working years doing business development and have many years of negotiating experience. This will be a very useful asset if I do become member of the town council. But the most important trait that I bring to this is listening to people. I'm out walking all over the place, talking and listening to everybody. I may be a novice when it comes to politics and being a politician, but the people that are actually claiming to have all these years of experience are leading this island down the wrong path. I can promise you this, I will understand every issue that is pertinent to this island and its residents. And more importantly, I'll understand every need and concern the residents have when it comes to issues so their voices are truly heard. This is truly a time when we need leadership to work together, but in concert with the residents, to resolve these issues. We need a town council that understands the importance of our residents so the people that call us place their home, they can love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. The first question goes to you. And one of the topics that our membership said was very important to them was that of empty commercial space, either renovating that or retrofitting that. Tell me your thoughts on, in District Three, Ward Three is an area where we could certainly see, you get a vote for all the areas, but certainly District Three would be one of those wards where we could see an improvement in this. What are your ideas for dilapidated commercial space in the area and the availability of commercial space?
Hannah, great, great question. This is probably one of the first things I've heard from the people I talked to out on the street. Ward Three truly does have a lot of empty commercial space. One thing that this island has as well is a tremendous treasure trove of contractors and builders and people that have been here that for a long time. They, and I've been talking to some of these contractors and people that develop, they would love to help out this township and this town council to take this, what we already have a footprint on. Alex talked about no more pavement. I've said that from day one. We got to take a pause on all commercial building, take a look at what is available and then retrofit that if we can. Even if it's not being able to retrofit, we can drop it, knock it down or redo it. But that footprint is already there and we're not developing on pristine property. So again, a great slight pause in building, talk, find out what's going on and come together with these solutions. And again, if you look at the Sam's Club, just a huge building that's being wasted, that Northridge Shopping Center, it just needs some new life. I'd say, yes, you know, workforce housing is important. I know we'll get into that. But we've got to look at what's available already. I mean, there's places down Dillon Road that are, that were purchased for workforce housing but never used. So again, Hannah, thank you for that question and that's the start of what I want to do.
Great ideas. Thank you, David. During your tenure, you have seen what can happen whenever dilapidated buildings are turned into something as beautiful as USCB, the Hilton Head Campus. Could the town do more? Could you do more if reelected to see these buildings become something?
Of course, Hannah. And I think my opponent suggested that growth and management of it is incredibly important. And I think that's true. But he also said that council has been leading the island down the wrong path. I think it's important to point out that my background is in planning and I have been pushing issues of planning now for probably three decades. But more important than that, in the term of, on the town council, I voted against the upzoning of properties that I felt were being done without an understanding of the impact. That's called growth management. And I think that the issues that the town is facing today with dilapidated commercial structures has a lot to do with what's been going on off-island. And so we do have vacancies that need to be dealt with. In my opinion, what ought to be done is the town should be forward-thinking and master-plan areas like Cordilla, Palmetto Bay Road and the Arrow Road Corridor. That would give businesses and private investors the confidence where we are going to end up. The owners of existing commercial properties that are underutilized might go to their banks and say, I want to upgrade this structure for these reasons now that I know what the town is going to do. I also believe that the commercial available square footage on the island is far greater than what we need under current circumstances. That commercial was built during the 1980s when Hilton Head was the epicenter of commercial activity south of the Broad. That is no longer the case. So a significant reboot of land use is required on this island to balance the need for commercial, the value to a private investor and to the community. Thank you, Hannah.
And Tommy, because David addressed specifically something, a comment that you had made about town councils' vote or leadership on this particular issue, you do have a 30-second rebuttal?
Yeah, Hannah, thank you. It actually was my opponent, Mr. Ames, that just spoke, that actually wrote the LMO laws, rewrote them in 2014, that in my opinion are going to decimate the overlay communities in the Guller community. I think it's important that people that are listening take a ride down Spanish Wells Road, see some of those tracks of land that are clear-cut, stacked homes going in. That's exactly what this council's been doing and my opponent's been doing. I just want people to take a minute, pause, see what's going on and see what my opponent actually did. I think that's great that he brought that up and what he's been doing for the last several terms. The LMO rewritten in 2014 has allowed for clear-cutting and stacked homes down Spanish Wells Road. And I think that's part of the destruction of our marshes as well. And we'll get into that later, I would imagine. Hannah, thank you.
David, the next question for you on topic is tourism. And, you know, there are a lot of different things you can unpack on tourism. But I specifically would love to get your opinion in, as a candidate and during your tenure, to expand the airport and the success of our local airport. Do you support the continued growth of our airport? What would you like to see happen there for its success?
I think the main thing that we have to be focused on when we're dealing with tourism is the quality of facilities that we create for tourists and how we welcome them with our programs. So I think it's very important that the airport has been renovated in terms of its capacity to serve the community. But more importantly, right now, we're reviewing the terminal project, which is going to provide the kind of welcoming that I think is appropriate for our guests coming into Hilton Head Island. So I think that the airport is just one of those facilities that we as a community should understand the benefit for our businesses. But it does point out that there is this conversation that's necessary between the resident and the business community and coming to a balance and an agreement on where our dollars should be invested. And I'm not sure that the community and that conversation has actually taken place to the extent that it should or could. And that's one reason why I pointed out in my introductory comments that I think the chamber is recognizing that the residents as their core client begins to open the door for that conversation. Thank you.
Tommy, as far as our tourism assets go, the infrastructure improvements as well as investment in our airport, do you support?
Hannah, thank you for that question. I appreciate it. Tourism is a vital part of Hilton Head and always will be. We all know that. It plays an integral part in our strength, our tax base, our lower tax base for our residents. Again, when I am out talking to people, the airport right now has been expanded. I think it's to its capacity where it should be. And I think we got to, again, take a look at what is going on with the residents here and listen to them. They don't feel that they've been looked at or been part of any of these decisions going on. So again, my thing is coming into this council. I want to sit back, talk to the people still and get their thoughts on this, okay? Thank you.
Tommy, the next question is for you and it is about workforce housing. I know that this is a subject matter that your opponent has worked hard on, on council. But, or do you have ideas on where workforce housing should go? What types of assets we should develop and to whom should we try to market that housing?
Hannah, thank you. Great question. Again, this is dominating all of this. I believe there is a need for workforce housing. I also believe there is underutilized housing still on this island that we haven't even talked about. And again, if you go down Dillon Road, you'll see a number of homes there that are never used that were actually purchased for workforce housing. I think the proposal for Palmetto Bay Road is on the books right now. I'd like to know more about that before we do it. But I just want to reach out to the China Berry Ridge people. There is a workforce housing blueprint that's been done that surrounds their entire development, their whole neighborhood, and they didn't even know about that. So again, decisions are being made that I think are important to all of us. But we have to talk and have the community involved with what's going on before decisions are made. To your point of the clientele or who should be here, I think we should leave that open. I know there's a lot of professionals, nurses, firemen, police, and we'll get into that, I would imagine, that would like to have spots here and available. And by all means, we should get into that and look at that and take care of that. But do it the right way. Let's not mess up pristine property to do it. Let's see what we have available and then go from there. Thank you.
David, your thoughts on workforce housing? Again, I mentioned when asking the question to Tommy that I know that this is something that you've worked on, we're not there yet. But what are your ideas to make it happen?
First of all, I would say that workforce housing has to be considered as an essential element of our infrastructure because without it, we can't maintain the quality of service or the capability of the broader community to serve itself and to be a whole community. If you, if you, if you imagine young people coming out of college or being early in their careers, wanting to live on the island, whether a teacher or as a nurse or as a professional lawyer, whatever, and not being able to find adequate housing on the island, that cuts off our community's ability to grow a young, vibrant leadership capability early enough to sustain this community in the way we want it sustained. There are two aspects of the workforce housing proposal that's before the town council. One was passed last week in town council and that was the repurposing of commercial space. I think that's a win-win for the community. We've talked about the dilapidated commercial structures, the underutilized commercial space. If we can get workforce housing in those areas, it makes sense. They largely are in areas where there's a significant amount of employment opportunities. So that brings together the worker and the opportunities. I think that's important. The larger issue is the one of bonus density, which the town council chose to pass this last time. That had the implication of doubling densities in areas where they had, the impacts were unplanned. That's something I'm uncomfortable with. And so I think the town council will look at that and decide whether or not it makes sense. But in the end, the LMO capabilities to create the stimulus to have a private developer come into this community and develop workforce housing is very, very doubtful. I think the community conversation is what commitment are we willing to make to make this happen? And that is a broad-based community conversation with residents and businesses coming together and deciding what actually must be done to have the quality of people in this community growing within this community down the road. Thank you.
Gentlemen, in the few minutes that we have left before we hop over to the Ward Six candidates, David, if you would just take a minute and if we did not talk about anything that you're particularly passionate about, that you would make a priority in a new, in a new election, do let us know and then we'll hop over to Tommy as well for the same answer.
Well, very, very, very quickly, my opponent mentioned the LMO rewrite. I think it's important for the community to understand that the LMO Rewrite Committee was told at the outset that we would not have impacts analysis available. Secondly, that this was at a time when the community was coming out of the 2008 recession and there was a strong support for stimulating in private investment. But perhaps more to the point, when this issue of clear-cutting actually came into place, other councilmen and I stood up and said that absolutely has to change. And we did, in fact, amend the LMO, the LMO to prohibit that from happening. Now, the main thrust that I think I'd like to convey to the community is that we have limited capital investment dollars in this community to improve our business opportunities, private sector investment and the quality of life for our residents. And to my way of thinking, that requires robust conversations among the different groups of people on the island, a plan and then a commitment to implement. Thank you very much.
Tommy, into you.
Hannah, thank you very much. I guess the marshlands and the environment, I think are really, really critical to me. And I want to remind everybody that it's my opponent, Mr. Ames, that wrote that LMO that allowed this to happen. I know he's talked about how many years he's been serving and how many zoning things he writes. But the people are the ones that should be listened to. And I'm telling you, if we take the time to go down Spanish Wells Road, you will see exactly what I'm talking about. I think, again, my thing is if this is the type of LMOs that are going to be put together by a town council, I certainly don't want any more of those. And I don't think the people that are listening and I don't think the people that are here want that as well. So again, something near and dear to me is the environment. And if we actually believe that, that should be the precedent. That should be what leads us in everything we do. The aesthetics, the environment, the water quality, which we've not talked about today, I think is going down because of impervious structures. I think it's important that we work together as a council, but we must do it with the residents. The residents, I mean, we got some great, smart people here that have been here for a long time. We got to work together and that will solve many of the problems. Thank you. I appreciate that opportunity.
Gentlemen, thank you again so much for your time. David Ames and Tommy Reitz, who are running for the District, I keep saying District, Ward Three race for the town of Hilton Head. We will now transition to the Ward Six candidates. And they will get their full 20 minutes, believe you me. But we'll make sure that we, that we give them their just time. We'll wait for their cameras to come on. And that's between Glenn Stanford and Kent Barry. So stand by just a moment while we get everybody powered up. We're getting there. Stand by just another second. Glenn, we need your video, video and audio. There we go. All right, gentlemen, thank you again so much. As I mentioned, you will definitely get your full 20 minutes. And we have topics that we still haven't gotten to talk about yet. So certainly some new issues coming up and perhaps reviewing some of the ones that have already been talked about. Thank you so much for joining us. We begin with the incumbent in Glenn Stanford. Glenn, if you'd just tell us a little bit about yourself and your community service and why you decided to run for this seat again.
Thank you, Hannah. I appreciate this opportunity and I thank the chamber for putting on this event so that our points of view can get out to the public. That is vitally important to the public and to all of us. I grew up in Atlanta, practiced law in Atlanta for about 40 years. Been coming to Hilton Head Island since I was a teenager. I've always loved it. And fortunately, my wife and I decided to move here in 2006. I hung up my spurs as a lawyer at the time and got involved in a community volunteer. I hung up my spurs as a lawyer at the time and got involved in community volunteerism. I worked for several years in the County Rural and Critical Lands Program. I also worked in the county, Southern Beaufort County Carter Beautification Program, where I'm proud to say that we beautified many of the medians of Highway 278. On the island, I was selected to be a member of the Border Zoning Appeals, served there for two terms, the last three years as chair. There you were working on that land management ordinance. I then moved on to the Planning Commission and served on the Planning Commissions until two years ago, when I was fortunate enough to be elected to this position. I think my experience here on the island and my broader experience through my education and practicing law will serve me well if I'm given the opportunity to continue to serve. I would like the opportunity to continue to serve and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. And Kent Barry, Kent, great to see you. And tell me a little bit about yourself, your public service and why you decided to run for this seat again.
Well, Hannah, it's always good to see you and thank the chamber for this opportunity to host this event. I came here in 1990 and I've said this is kind of like a, everybody can probably tell each other everything we've done because after three forums, you get that point. I came here in 1990 as the golf course superintendent of the Melrose Club on DeFuski. And of course, the Melrose Club is no longer there and DeFuski is barely hanging on by a thread. But I fell in love with this part of the country. I fell in love with DeFuski. So my my community involvement is I was on the long-term planning with the Island Rec Center and I was a, am a graduate of the Hill Med, Bluffton Chamber of Commerce 2015. You know, I'm a small businessman. I've been in the small business operation for 44 years. Most of it is in management. So I, you know, I understand what it is to run a business, manage a business, and also have the service workers and everyone else that is necessary to be vital part of that community. The reason I'm running is because I got a chance to run, as with Glenn and two others, 15 months ago, when Mayor McCann or John McCann became mayor. It was a great learning experience for me. I learned what I didn't need to do as well as what I should do. And I've sat back and I've watched and I've hoped that the current town council and mayor would have been more transparent. I just don't feel that's being 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 done the way that we had hoped. So I said, you know what, it's time to it's time to give it another shot. So here I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. The first question is for you, Kent, and specifically, our members wanted to know how you all felt about the the debate right now over community policing, specifically the Sheriff's Department and the tug of war between Beaufort County and the town of Hilton Head over Sheriff's Department funding. The bigger, I'd love to know how you feel about that, but the bigger issue here is really that dynamic between the municipality of Hilton Head that exists inside of the county of Beaufort, inside of the state of South Carolina. But those interactions that you have to be delicate and negotiate with them and flexible. Kent, do you feel like the current town council is creating an environment to succeed within Beaufort County, maintaining those relationships? What do you feel like we should do better in that specific issue over the Sheriff's Department?
Well, let me ask, let me answer that real quick. But it's one of my top key platform items, and that is to reestablish the dialogue with Beaufort County to, you know, get us back to a point where we might be able to coexist a little bit better. The, it's interesting that this whole conversation just keeps coming up because, you know, it's, we have to work together with the pieces and parts that we have that the county maintains, that the town of Hilton Head owns, whether it be the roads, you know, the parks and Planters Row. I mean, we're getting ready to, that's ours, but we certainly haven't done much with it. I think that the part of being a good leader is to be a good listener. And I know that there's communication going on. I mean, it's, you know, I want to say one thing that, you know, I'm not going, I'd be remiss if I did not say that the current council and the councils before that have done some very good things. You know, this is not that, oh, it's the end of the world here. I think that we need to be more communicative and more listening to what each other talk about. I think we need to listen to our residents. You know, an interesting paradox is the convenience then. We own the land, Beaufort County manages. So it, you know, that's not really a good thing for either one of us. So I'm concerned about that. I think the sheriff has done an outstanding job. And one thing that I will say that's been interesting is that in the in the paper in the in the past maybe six weeks, five months or so, there's been two articles, four page by the town, talking about the sheriff and talking about our our plan, which is very, very important, either one of those. What I'm kind of concerned about is there's been nothing from the town prior to that talking about trying to calm the fears of what has happened in March of this year through the terrorists, excuse us, to the tourists, to the residents, to everyone. So communication is key for me. Thank you, Hannah.
Glenn, I pose a question to you about the relationship with Beaufort County and specifically that the issue over the Sheriff's Department funding.
Thank you, Hannah. I understand the question and to try to answer the question, I would say, first of all, I don't think we have a sheriff problem. I think we have a county problem. We get excellent service from the county sheriff's department. We have a low crime rate here. Of course, I wish it was lower, but I think if you compare to other communities, we are well policed here. The sheriff has stated that he is providing the same level of service on Hilton Head Island as he does in all of the areas of the county. And he is not asking for more money from the town. The sheriff is paid through the general fund of the county. The town of Hilton Head Island makes an enormous share of the contribution of taxes to that fund. And so we are already paying a large degree, probably more than we're actually receiving. And that's the way it is in these things. But the relationship with the county, as I say, is the broader issue. I'm opposed to the notion of the county imposing a selective tax on the town of Hilton Head Island to pay for sheriff services that are already paid for through our contribution to property taxes. That's unfair, unnecessary, and frankly, in my opinion, it's likely to be found illegal. Insofar as a relationship with the county is concerned, as we speak, there are open lines of communication between members of council, of both councils. And I am in contact with members of the Beaufort County Council. I know all of them on a first-name basis and have had a relationship with them for a number of years. We need to keep the dialogue open, but right now, we're locked down, unfortunately, in litigation because the county gave us no opportunity to protect the taxpayers of Hilton Head Island from having to pay twice for the same service. So it's important for us to have these open communications, and I intend to keep that. This is not a personal issue. This is a policy issue, I think, between the county and the town. And we need to be sitting down one-on-one to resolve these issues. Right now, once the litigation is underway, the court will try to encourage, indeed force, the parties to get together and find a solution. I want to be part of the solution to that, and I think a rational solution can be discovered. Thank you.
Glenn, the next question is for you. Our membership was very interested in the the topic of arts and culture expansion. And in your particular district, there are a lot of residents. It's not super heavy on in tourism, like on the south end of the island where we just talk for the District Three. But, you know, that's a that's a quality of life that we enjoy to have the arts and culture offerings for not only our visitors, but for our residents. Where do you, where do you, what is your vision for expanding arts and cultural offerings for Hilton Head and its residents?
Thank you for the question. The arts are a vital part of the community and I intend to continue to support the offerings that we have here. You probably saw just a week ago where the council allocated some survival money, if you will, to the art center and to the concourse. Those are two offerings that are here. In terms of the vision moving forward, I would like for us to see if we can develop an arts district here on Hilton Head Island. That would not be in Ward Three, but as I see it, around the art center, you have the opportunity of the building that the chamber is in now, where if the chamber were to move, that building would be available. And I think we should seriously consider looking at expanding those facilities. Culture is the other aspect of your your question. The culture here arises first from the native islanders. It also arises from the climate and the environment that we have here and the amazing plants and resources that we have to enjoy. Frankly, I look at the tree cover that we have here on Hilton Head Island as part of our culture as well. And during my term on council, I have fought against clear cutting and we have succeeded in tightening the rules and making it more difficult for a developer to accidentally, as they say, clear cut a site. That's not acceptable. They need to be punished for that. So I see great opportunities for us here. We do have limited resources, but we need to protect the things that we consider to be vital. Thank you.
Kent, what is your vision for expanding arts and cultural offerings?
Well, I think that the town has done a very good job of trying to take care of our, the art center and and the cultural portion of our area. You know, I think that it's like anything else this year with the pandemic. Every way of life has been dramatically altered. And certainly, the art center, the capacity has been reduced dramatically, just like everything has been reduced dramatically. So I think we're doing a good job right now of trying to develop the arts and keep the arts community going. Culturally, I'm not sure how how well we've done, although we certainly have not done awful. Okay, it's not, again, I'm not sitting here saying that this is the end of the world. But I'll give you two examples of of concern that I have. And I still share a passion for tree canopy and that's what I do. So on, and when you go down Dillon Road, you have a sign that that points to the airport and it points left. Well, I've often wondered, and I said this two years ago, why can't we put a sign that says Mitchellville and explain a little bit about it and say, go to the right? And yet we don't. You come down Beach City Road, you see a sign that says Ford Howe. Why can't we have a sign that says Mitchellville straight ahead? So, you know, I get confused and conflicted on our cultural parameters here. My last one I will talk about, and I've said this so many times, I probably blew in the face and everybody's probably tired of hearing me, is, you know, we have four four gull of communities. You've got Grassland, Bagel, Mitchellville, and I just forgot the other one, and that terrible Big Hill. We have two housing starts that have started in there. They're now building quite crazily. And and I don't think we did a very good job of not clear cutting because we took down just about every tree. So it's one thing to say that and it's another to get it done. We've also, by doing that, have created a little bit of a culture shock for both the native residents in these areas and the people that are buying these these units. So again, it's kind of tricky and I think we could do a better job. Thank you.
Kent, a question for you. Let's circle back. The number one issue amongst our members that they wanted to hear from was about the 278 corridor expansion. And I know that we asked the Ward One candidates about that at the the beginning of this forum. But to circle back, because not only the bridge replacement, but the intersections in that corridor are so vitally important to the residents that live in and would live in in your ward. Do you have a specific alternative that you favor? Or do you have a vision for the 278 corridor that you feel is being played out or needs to go in one direction or another?
Well, I do, part of it is I hope that we stay true to the fact that Hilton Head has a deciding vote in what exactly does come this way versus letting the South Carolina DOT or the county or anyone else kind of ramrod it through. I don't have a particular alternative that is what I think is the best because it still is going to impact the stony community. And I think that it's very important that we look at minimizing that impact to that community. Now, the part, we got an independent engineer that has been enlisted by the group. And I'm really waiting to hear more feedback from him once we get that part of it done. I know that the committee, the Highway 278 Corridor Committee, had experienced, and I believe you're on that, experienced, and Alex, experienced a little bit less than, I don't know. We didn't have as many folks from the native islander areas on there as I would have hoped to have seen. And again, it's no, because people choose not to run, you can't sit there and say, well, you didn't have them in there. They 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 did not choose to be part of it. We have to be very, very careful. I I was out at a couple of businesses a couple of weekends ago and that the town has purchased their 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 land ahead of this proposed corridor, whatever it is. And I was very much taken aback by the fact that we say one thing about our native community and then kind of do another. And I've made a video of it. I'm not going to go into it here. Again, when you when you say you're going to do something, do it. Don't say one thing and do another. Thank you.
Mr. Stanford, your thoughts on the 278 corridor project as well as, again, specifically the intersections that have drawn a lot of concern?
Thank you, Ms. Horn. I appreciate the question. I have not picked a particular route because I need to rely on the advice that I expect that we will receive from an independent engineer that will be serving us to guide us through that. I don't pretend to be a highway engineer, and so it's very difficult for me to come in and recommend a particular route one over the other. When we talk about intersections, I believe that a large part of the congestion is caused by the intersections and indeed the traffic lights that are there. A solution, I don't know if it's going to be the final solution, but a solution would be an elevated road going over those intersections or under those intersections, however, an engineer might select. So I am not convinced that with improvement of those intersections so that there is a free flow of traffic through there, that that wouldn't allow us to maintain some of the four-lane character of that road as it exists now. Again, I will rely on the services of an engineer who will come in and tell us what the actual facts and realities are about the pluses and minuses of the final preferred alternative when it comes out. Yes, the town will have the opportunity to veto or approve up or down the preferred alternative when it comes before us. At that time, when that decision is before council, if indeed I'm still on the council, I will listen to that advice and then make the decision in what I consider to be the best interest of the entire community. I'm pleased to see that SC DOT has recently brought in an aesthetics designer who has broad experience in beautifying these roads. Beautifying may be too strong a term, but making them more appealing. Also, I'm encouraged to hear that the whole plan, once it gets onto Jenkins Island and flows on into Hilton Head Island, the median will be what's called raised medians. There'll be planting beds. There'll be native plants in there. Those are the kind of things that can improve the appearance of the community, of that highway. Insofar as the impact on the stony community is concerned, I am very worried about that. But I'm a little bit encouraged because SC DOT has active negotiations and discussions ongoing. ongoing with the affected families in the area and I'm told that they're having some positive outcomes. No decision has been made. We do have an opportunity on Chamberlain Drive, which is the extension of Squire Pope Road. On Chamberlain Drive, the town owns a lot of land. That is still in the stony community. I think that should be in play if in fact those people would like to be able to move and continue to have their homes in that area. But those native islanders would then have the opportunity to have access to a traffic signal. So the Highway 278 is a complicated matter. It's the biggest project that's ever come along. And while I understand people would like to know what individual council members or candidates for council want to do, I think each of us has said we need to rely on the services of an independent advisor serving us alone and that's the position that I would take on this. Thank you.
In the next couple minutes that we have, Glenn, if you would take one of those minutes and Kent, another, but we'll start with you, Glenn, as to any topic that we did not discuss for this particular ward, for your race, that you would make a priority and why voters should vote for you.
Right now, the biggest issue in Ward Six is Arbor Nature. Arbor Nature is going into, a lot of people thought they were going in there just to trip, chip trees, but no, indeed, they're looking at a waste transfer station. I am very concerned about that. I have stated my active opposition to that from the moment I heard of it. It has the opportunity to be an environmental disaster having to do with the drainage that would be coming out of this area. I am very concerned about that. Then I feel the need to respond to some of the comments that have been made about transparency and communication. In fact, since I have been on council, I have published a quarterly newsletter. I send it out to everyone who wants to see it. I have received innumerable emails and I make a serious effort to respond to every one of those. So I think I have an open door. I think my positions are transparent and I intend to continue that if elected. That being said, I would appreciate the votes of the people who are watching in Ward Six and I encourage you to cast that vote and cast it based upon the issues. Thank you.
Kent?
Well, I think that the two items that I feel very strong about, and again, I'm looking at my key platform items, and that is when we talk about workforce housing, you know, and I've, I know we've defined who it is, but we don't have the numbers. In other words, who are we targeting for these housing? And is the housing somewhat available already? I know that there's been conversation from Tom on Ward Three, Dillon Road, title bluff. I know that two resorts own that property, but you know, with pandemic this year, it's seasonal and it's empty and those are homes. You know, if we're targeting educators, first responders, caregivers and middle managers, these are the folks that we want to come in here and raise a family and have family and stay in these places that are nice. Not that workforce housing is not nice. I don't mean to say that. But there are some options and we need to define how many people we're looking at so that we can look at existing housing to see if there's a way to make that work. Workforce housing that is being talked about by the resorts and everyone else is for seasonal temporary workers, whether you call them HQBs or whatever, because the folks that live in Colliton County, Jasper County, Hampton County and Fairfax County, they want to get to work. And so my second part is the transportation. If you live in those four counties and you work and you live there and you have family there, you're not going to want to come to Hilton Head to live. You want to have the ability to have public transportation that may offer you additional routes so that you can shorten your day. Quality of time for these folks that live in these nether regions is amazing. Their day is so long. If we could add routes and buses so that we could shorten that, it would benefit them tremendously. And you know, the one thing I'll end on, when I worked in, on DeFuski, we used to have the majority of our staff come from Savannah and they would leave at 3:30 and 4 o'clock in the morning, drive to Salty Fair when it came out of Salty Fair and you'd hop on a boat that either got you there, if you had a good, quick captain, would be 35 minutes and if you had the old slow boat, it was an hour. You'd work your time and then you'd have the reverse going home. So many of these, many of these people were working 12, 13, 14, 15 hours a day, not only getting paid for whatever. So I sat down with the Director of Human Resources for the Melrose Club and also one of the counterparts for Hegpoint and we came up with a plan to run a boat out of Hutchinson Island. Well, lo and behold, everybody said that's the greatest thing on earth and we were able to shorten that trip and we had more people who wanted to come to DeFuski. So the same thing and the same thing goes for Hilton Head. Watch what we're looking for in housing and how we can increase the routes so that people can have shorter days here and more time with their families. And I've said it before, I want to earn the votes. That's all I'm looking for. It's come November 3rd, I want to earn the vote of the Ward Six folks so that I might have a chance to be your representative for the next four years. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much again for your time this afternoon. I thoroughly enjoyed the conversation amongst all of the candidates for these seats. Just so appreciate your thoughtfulness and again, anytime that someone wants to serve our community, all I could do is just say thank you. Just a reminder that we have some really fun events coming up here at the chamber. Those of you who are still with us, just want to remind you tomorrow morning, you can tune in via the Zoom, Facebook Live or the Beaufort County channel for our weekly town hall meeting starts at 9:15. Next Tuesday, just a reminder, we're going to begin at noon. We're going to have a conversation with Nancy Mace, who's a Republican running for Congress. I grow with Google. Those of you who are in the retail sector would like to know more about the Google application Shopify, a really neat application you might could use for holiday shopping and e-commerce solution for you. And then South Carolina business loans are a hot topic right now. There are other loan programs, grant programs that we're also going to tell you about on the weekly town hall. But the South Carolina Business Loan Webinar is a competitive loan program that is being offered here in our community. So we're going to have a webinar on that on the 22nd. Lots more information on our Facebook page as well as our website. And again, we just thank you so much for tuning in, learning more about the candidates and we'll see you at the polls or the mailbox with your absentee ballots come November the 3rd.